Like eight or no. Yeah.
So you can feel like it was forever ago.
Yeah, well, yesterday. Here's what I'm reflecting. Basically, it's the same one they've said. You want, what has this? Yeah, basically, it's the same.
I'm waving to the camera to let them know that we're starting. Chair of boys. Councilmember Phil Seth. Councilmember Fine. Mayor Scharf. For present.
All right, so we're going to move on to item one, which is agenda review and staff update.
Good morning, Chair, members of the committee. Michelle DeFrancia is going to give you an overview of the briefing packet that's enclosed in your agenda, and then I'll give you an update on some VTA activities last week.
Good morning, Michelle DeFrancia with Matt McDonald. I'll quickly summarize my briefing packet submitted to you as we have a couple of big presentations today. One from High Speed Rail and the other one on all the planning work that we've been doing for the community workshop on May 20th. So on that note, for the community workshop planning, we've held several meetings with staff, with consultant team, with Circle Point, Gary Toth and Nadia Nyak to develop an outline for the workshop, and Joshua will be giving you a presentation with more details on all the planning efforts, including the postcard that we're hoping to mail out to 15,000-plus people in the next week or so. High Speed Rail, they held a CSCG meeting on April 19th last week. We were in attendance. I personally was not able to. The city and county staff coordinating group for High Speed Rail and Caltrain Electrification, it's a group that meets monthly, and it's the staff of the cities along the corridor, and they support the LPMG, which also, I think, is meeting tomorrow night, actually, and Tom is our rep for that. So on the agenda, and Caltrain and High Speed Rail rotate each month running the meeting. So this month's meeting was led by High Speed Rail, Ben and his team. They did, they provided updates on operators expressing interest for High Speed Rail. I think they have a big community outreach event happening, and Ben can probably provide you more information on all of those activities. Preferred alternative is still supposed to be released this summer, we've heard in August, with the draft environmental document coming out this fall, I think we've heard October. They did have some breakout sessions with the people in attendance at that meeting. I think they were focused on three key areas, including passing tracks, the light maintenance facility in Brisbane, and the approaches to the Deardon station. I think you received a separate report on the passing track item and the open houses that were held by High Speed Rail Authority earlier this month, so you should have that information on passing tracks. Wayside horns, we provided you additional information on wayside horns per our presentation given on March 22nd on quiet zones. Please let me know if you have any questions related to that. It was provided by our rail engineer, Michael Canepa, who gave you the presentation on quiet zones in March. And lastly, there's also some background information on vegetation landscaping requirements for the rail corridor as it relates to electrification and the poles being installed or to be installed in the future. I think that concludes my report, if you have any questions for me.
Yeah. So at the end of this report here, you talk about the right-of-way with the tree clearance.
Yes.
Could you explain, it says right-of-way varies from 80 to 100 feet, and the tree line's well inside that corridor, and then it shows a picture of Atherton. I wasn't sure what that was.
Yes, so the question was raised to me as it relates to Atherton. I believe maybe there was some talk about Atherton receiving an exception or something for their landscaping as it overhangs or impacts the right-of-way. And what I've learned from this information provided by Mike Canepa is that we need 21 feet, or Caltrain needs 21 feet clearance from center of track to where the landscaping hits, and there are no exceptions that we know of.
So how does that relate when you say we have an 80-foot right-of-way? That seems like that's playing wide enough. Is it 21 feet from the track?
From the track.
So if the right-of-way is even larger, can they clear it out of the right-of-way?
Sorry, I would need to get back to you on that, but I think, I think that was just a general number presented in terms of the, how it varies, the right-of-way varies, but...
So my understanding in the EIR, they tested a center line in five places, Palo Alto wasn't one of them. Does that preclude us from getting the center line electrification?
If I could jump in, I think we're going to have to come back to you with the final draft of the construction agreement with Caltrain around electrification, and there's a lot of sections in that agreement that address these specific issues.
I'm concerned that it's final draft, and again, when I read this, it sounds like it's showing potentially wide swaths of trees that need to be removed, and if that's part of the EIR, we have no say in it, I'm concerned.
So we can go back and look at the specific language in the draft agreement before it comes back to you and make sure that, you know, we can, that we address this at the greatest extent possible.
Okay, I mean, I've asked several times, and again, there seems to be this option between a center power rail and the two on the outer side, and again, it could potentially have a big impact on the appearance of Caltrain through Palo Alto.
If I, if I could jump in on that. Chair, you've made that point, and in fact, I've asked the utilities electrical engineering staff to talk to High Speed Rail about that, to see what could be accomplished. It's our understanding that, to date, much of the discussion we've been having with our consultants has been, it's a design-build contract, so some of these issues are not fully fleshed out, but to the extent, you pointed out that Atherton may have received some special, either agreement or commitment to using a center pole as opposed to a frame or a bent type structure for holding the electrical lines. We'll get some follow-up information.
Okay, thank you.
The wayside horns. Do you know if there's an intersection or anywhere in the, sort of nearby where there's wayside horns installed?
I would need to ask Mike Canepa about that. I personally do not know.
Nice to go listen to him.
I could get back to you on that.
Thanks.
And then finally, an update on the VTA board workshop on Friday. Last Monday, the VTA staff released a draft, the agenda for the board workshop, and upon review, we noticed that there was some arbitrary language inserted into the staff report that had not previously been seen by the technical advisory committee or the policy advisory committee. And this language was in the section that deals with the program guidelines for the Caltrain grade separation program under Measure B. And basically, they were attempting to restrict the funding to grade separations that kept the track bed at the existing level, which raised concerns from Palo Alto Mountain View and Sunnyvale. So we reached out to staff at the other two cities and also organized some of our advocates to attend the board meeting, the board workshop on Friday. We also sent a staff member there to read some comments, and as a result, the VTA staff has agreed to remove that language as those guidelines move forward. So we will keep an eye on those guidelines, and we may need to organize again if, you know, any similar language reenters the program guidelines in the future. And the board did not take any action on Friday, it was a workshop.
We coordinated at the level, at the city manager level between the three cities, and I think that, you know, going forward, we're going to work on developing, you know, or renewing sort of the collaboration and the joint positions and stuff that we took, you know, on the original Measure B work, so that we're, you know, it's not just Palo Alto speaking on this as much as possible, but all three cities.
Any questions?
Is there a point where the VTA guidelines become finalized, where they can't?
Yeah, there is a point where they'll be officially adopted by the board.
What is that?
It should be at their next meeting, I would imagine. VTA staff is going to have to revise them based on what they heard on Friday. They may bring them back to all the committees before they go back to the board, or they may not. It would be the beginning of June. I can check on that and get that out to you guys.
So I heard they made statements committing to fund all eight grade SEPs, and was there much discussion about funding for planning activities?
They have said to me, you know, on our meetings with VTA staff, that they were going to try to access Measure B funding in the first two years to do planning and implementation work. And let me correct my statement, there is a board meeting on May 4th where they'll be dealing with the bus route restructuring. I am not quite sure if they're going to also add the program guidelines, but if they do, when that agenda is published, we'll notify the rail committee.
I mean, it seemed pretty clear that we're going to have more time. It seemed like they were committed to eight grade SEPs, and we don't necessarily have to rush as much as we thought we did. I'm glad to hear we're talking about Sunnyvale Mountain View. I've heard that some of the VTA board members said if, if we could come back with a coordinated plan, that they would, they would be open to adopting that as the preferred approach. Any other comments on this item? So I got one speaker on this item, and then we have members of the public that wanted to speak for oral communications, so I think we'll do item one, and then we'll go back to oral communications. So Nadia.
Hi, Nadia Nyak from CARD. So I was at the VTA meeting, I talked to Scott Hayward. From what I understand, they are bringing it back to the different committees, and they're supposed to decide at their early June meeting. I think the biggest news is that nobody talked about Race to the Top at all. It was very much, they want Sunnyvale, Mountain View, and Palo Alto to really work together on what the guidelines were, and they talked about really trying to fund all eight grade separations, not having it just be whoever gets there first, which I thought was super important. They did not talk about planning. I did notice that in the bike section, they had very specific stuff on a percentage for planning, so we definitely have to fight to make sure that that gets in there. We also talked, or I made a public comment about them potentially trying to encourage the cities to work together to reduce costs by staging the construction or minimizing operating time, shutdown time for a Caltrain. So just to keep that in mind, thanks. Oh, sorry, but they did say they want to hear from the city specifically, so the more people from the city of Palo Alto who can, and council members who can talk to the different members, that would be super helpful, particularly to Jeannie Bruins, who is the Los Altos council member, who's the VTA chair, the MTC chair, and also our Caltrain rep on the Caltrain board. Thanks.
So thanks very much to the city of Palo Alto and the other cities for stepping up and explaining why the well-intentioned condition from the VTA that was designed to be fiscally prudent but was just completely misguided and wouldn't achieve the goal. So thanks for speaking up, and then in advance, working with the other cities on coming up with a solution. Having, watching closely how County of San Mateo has done grade separations over time, so I do hear the concern about a kind of race to the top, and maybe the first project will get all the funding, but realistically, in San Mateo County where they've had money for 20 years, they've been doing projects spaced out as different cities get ready, and it really hasn't been the case that there was an initial crush in 1990-whatever when they first passed Measure A. So I think making sure that the money gets divvied up fairly is reasonable, but I wouldn't be as worried that somebody would get it all immediately. And the, but the other thing that I'm concerned about, also having watched that, is that if there's a desire, so the desire to get as many projects funded is important, but trying to split it eight ways depending on the costs and the needs of the project, my concern is that if you try to split the money eight ways, that might not be enough to go around, and you might wind up with fewer than eight projects because there's less overall money, because this is, you know, matched money with state and local and so on, sources. So in looking for the right solution, would encourage thinking about, you know, how to have the cities work together and divvy the money up fairly, but to make sure that projects will actually get done and, you know, not getting the pie so thin that maybe they won't get funded. Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to go back to oral communications. We have three speakers. First speaker is Richard Brand, followed by Herb Borack.
Yeah, good morning, everybody. This, I'm Richard Brand, Palo Alto, and I wanted to give you an update on the San Mateo County Transportation Authority program on the Dunbarton Rail Corridor study. As I've told some of you, I've been working on this for 20, over 20 years. Remember when Dina Mosser was the mayor? I actually contacted, there is an active study, activity going on in San Mateo County to study what to do with the existing rail corridor. The county owns the, the right-of-way for the old Southern Pacific tracks that go across from here to Fremont, and so they, in the study, have been funded in part by Facebook to see how this could be reopened and integrate with rail lines on both our side of the bay and that side of the bay. And so the lady who's in charge of this, San Mateo County, I also contacted the mayor of Menlo Park, who, Kirsten Keith, who also has been active in this area for quite a while. The study's supposed to be published in August, and she did indicate to me, Tom, I think I copied you on this, that she's willing to come and speak to this committee on the, on the project when it's ready to do that, and so I just want to offer that as an option. I can get you in touch with her. I just took my niece over to East Bay a couple days ago in the afternoon. It's a zoo. That, that road, you know, that road is absolutely at capacity, and a rail link is very important. So I'm an advocate for that, and I'm just here to let you know that there's activity and somebody who's willing to come and give you an update. Thank you.
Thanks. And our next speaker, Herb Borack.
Good morning. There's been some items in the news about the leadership at both Caltrain and High Speed Rail. The executive director of High Speed Rail has announced that he will be leaving, and the joint powers board thinks so highly of their top officer that they voted in a performance bonus. And I was thinking that one way to get rid of somebody is to give them glowing recommendation for another job, and I noticed that the High Speed Rail Authority will be having a closed session meeting on Monday relating to the employment of an executive director, and the 30-minute agenda item is compensation and contract deliberation. So it sounds like they already have someone in mind. Now, I hadn't heard that they were making a public solicitation and noticing everybody that the job's available and that anybody who wanted to could apply. So perhaps Mr. Hartnett will be moving on to High Speed Rail. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, I guess we'll move on to our second item, which is a joint letter to Union Pacific.
Thank you, Chair. At your request, we placed this item on the agenda, if you want to speak to it, if not, we can cover it.
Sure, I can speak to it. So at the, you know, at the policymakers' group meeting, the cities discussed and agreed, working on a joint letter. This is a draft, I think it's still subject to edits, but I think today the idea would be to give approval for the mayor to sign the final version of the letter, and also to give any feedback we have on, on the letter itself. So any comments?
So Tom, who drafted? So, Tom, who drafted this letter?
I think several members of the committee, including Jillian from San Francisco who's on LPMG.
So we're gonna sign on as a joint letter, right? I mean, we're not signing this by ourselves.
Right, exactly.
All right. Because I noticed it, so it's draft, because I noticed there's a bunch of typos and...
It's an early draft.
You know, that kind of stuff. Has there been a later draft?
I haven't seen one yet, so I think it's an opportunity for us to give some feedback and then, you know, basically have you sign a final draft.
So do you have, so I, but I only sign if everyone else signs, right? That's the plan?
That's the plan.
Okay. Do you have any feedback on the letter or do you...
I do, but once you go ahead.
No, I wanted to hear what you had to say.
I actually was gonna scan it while you talked. There's one place I wanna change. Go ahead.
No, that's really all I had. I mean, I wanted to hear what you had to say on it since this came out of the PMG working group, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so I wanted to sort of hear what you guys were thinking and trying to achieve and that kind of stuff.
Yeah, it wasn't drafted during the meeting. Obviously, it was drafted outside. The, there was a reference to supporting... Hang on.
I have a question.
Yep. Go ahead.
Just real briefly, if they agree to 2% grade, that gives us maximum flexibility in what we wanna do with the separations. Is that right?
Yeah.
Good.
So we do have one speaker, two speakers. So Herb Borack, do you wanna go ahead and make your comments?
The local policymaker group originally didn't make decisions. It's essentially advisory to Caltrain essentially, and they alternate meetings between, with Caltrain and High Speed Rail. Tomorrow, I guess will be one of the High Speed Rail meetings. And at last month's meeting, at the suggestion of Vice Mayor Siegel of Mountain View, they wanted to get a letter that was the collective view of the LPMG. And I guess they got two volunteers, Ms. Gillette and Mr. Siegel, to draft a letter. Tomorrow's agenda for the LPMG does not have this letter on the agenda. It has just a simple, single item about, you know, the LPMG, what it wants to talk about. And so as I understood it, the purpose was to get a collective view of LPMG. And that's what I think this would be. Also, as was discussed at a previous meeting here, the rail committee did not have, didn't need the flexibility that the previous committee had where this committee made decisions. That is, there would be time to make recommendations to the council and then the council could act. And it would seem to me, since it's not an agendized item tomorrow on the letter at the LPMG, that most likely, if it's gonna be making a collective decision, that would be the following month. So there's more than enough time for a final letter to come back through here and to go to the council, to go to the council directly. And also, at that point, the LPMG may decide they want individual letters coming from each city that say the same thing, as opposed to just something that's their advice to the staff of Caltrain. And one other thing that they talked about for making the change in freight would be that you could put the horns at the bottom of the train. In terms of the grade, as you'll hear from, on the next agenda item, High Speed Rail has no intention of changing the grade on the rail. And the freight would need to interrelate with Union Pacific for freight that goes outside of the peninsula, that comes from outside of the peninsula, where they will be going on Union Pacific tracks that are not electrified. And that gets into question, the relationship between the two of those. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Two more speakers, Adina Lovin, I'm sorry, Nadia Nyak, and then Adina Lovin.
Hi, Nadia Nyak with CARD. So, specific feedback on the actual letter, just after the bullet points where it says, "We believe that these projects and changes are complementary and achieve the most benefit for all parties." I think we can take that out. I'd be surprised if anybody who signs onto this letter has actually even read the agreements or knows what they say. As you know, we've presented to this committee before about our consternation about the fact that these letters never even made it to the Caltrain Board. I don't think there's any reason for us to say that we deem that they were fabulous or not. I think we could just move forward from there, saying that we're interested in talking to Union Pacific. I would also differ with what Herb says. I think the point of the local policymaker working group is, it seems to be the only forum that is a way for all of the cities to kind of give a united front. And though they do not have technical power, I think there's a lot of political will there. And so signing onto a joint letter, a single one that is signed by all of those cities is actually a very powerful message. I don't think the goal is to have every city do a one-off. I think they want everybody on one letter and it's important. When it comes to the 2% grade, Caltrain's own guidelines, which are available online, allow the trains to go up to 2%. Union Pacific already operates on the Caltrain line. We already know that Union Pacific can go 2%. In fact, in the Tehachapi's, they go up to 6%. It's not an issue. It's also not a problem for High Speed Rail. They can easily climb and go down. That's how they're eventually gonna get through the Tehachapi's. So that is actually not part of the issue and this is an easy letter for them to sign onto. We know from people who've talked to Union Pacific that it's technically possible. So I think it's low-hanging fruit and it's just a good way for all of us to work with our fellow cities in signing onto something together. I will say that there is other things related to freight that we should look at in the future. There are some things about clearances on the sides of the train and on the top of the train that will actually have an effect on the price of grade separations, which is part of the work that we should continue to do through the local policymaker working group. And I'm happy to talk to staff about the more technical details on that. Thank you.
Adina Lovin.
Adina Lovin. Friends of Caltrain strongly agree with what Ms. Nyak just said in terms of the value of local policymaker working group and having the cities work together and present a unified voice to Caltrain and High Speed Rail and blended system freight, et cetera. Wanted to build on what Nadia had just said. I wanna talk a little bit more about the item that she alluded to. Wouldn't recommend that Palo Alto diverge its letter, keep the letter the same, but if this was something that the local policymaker group together wanted to include at the meeting, this is something that you might wanna consider whether to agree to it. And there's a California state law that goes back to the days of trains that the operator would need to kind of stand out on the side of the train and look for passing cows. And it, it's about the side clearances of a freight train. And what that means is it makes level boarding basically impossible if you follow this rule. Level boarding is a part of Caltrain Modernization Phase II, that project that would get you longer trains and level boarding that would speed up the entire system in addition to being more accessible. And this rule prevents that from technically being done. So this is another topic to work with freight on. And the question is whether that should be included in this letter at this time to make sure that in going to this short haul operator, that doesn't preclude working to clean up this legal barrier or, you know, to agree to work on that later. But that's another definitely related topic that needs to be hashed out with freight in order to achieve the goals for Caltrain modernization with level boarding and fast, smooth operations. Thank you.
Thanks. So I'll make a motion if nobody has comments. I would move that the rail committee recommends council approve having the mayor sign this letter on our behalf with the final letter substantially similar to this current draft. All in favor?
Hey, Tom, a quick question. I mean, you, what's your sense of when we'll have a final letter?
I think Mr. Borack was right. It'll probably be another month.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so moving on to item number three. Just receive a presentation and discuss High Speed Rail. Ben?
Thank you, Chair. Today, we have Ben Tripousis, who's the lead for the San Jose to San Francisco segment of High Speed Rail, and he's gonna give you a presentation, followed by a Q and A.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members, for the opportunity to update you on where we are with the development of the High Speed Rail project from San Francisco to Merced. I'll give a brief overview. Given the amount of time that's passed since this latest incarnation of the project has been undertaken, there have been a great many changes to the project, certainly in the Peninsula Corridor between San Francisco and San Jose. There are many new stakeholders and community members that are just coming to understand the project as well as policymakers who weren't engaged at the outset. So my presentation will include a brief video history of how we got here and how we arrived at blended service and working with our Caltrain partners on the development of the Peninsula Corridor. So briefly, again, we're working on the dark blue line you see here, the Phase One section of the High Speed Rail project between San Francisco and Los Angeles Union Station in Anaheim, roughly a 520-mile section. That Phase One project is expected to be completed by 2029, followed by the yellow alignments that you see here that would extend the Phase Two sections of the project from Sacramento, forgive me, from Merced to Sacramento and from Los Angeles Union Station eventually to San Diego, making the entire statewide system 800 miles in its entirety once it's completed. The next time someone asks you if that High Speed Rail thing is ever going to happen, you can say it's happening. It's currently under construction in the Central Valley, 119 miles of construction from Madera to just north of Bakersfield. Over $3 billion in investment of the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act funds, the federal dollars committed by the Congress and the Obama administration. And that construction is currently underway and this will give you an indication of what's going on. Sorry?
Road 27 is the northernmost worksite on the project, where crews have completed drilling and pouring concrete for support piers and abutments. Completion of this segment will allow traffic to safely cross over the existing BNSF tracks and future High Speed Rail lines, eliminating the existing gated crossing and improving area safety. The Fresno River Viaduct, located just outside the city of Madera, was the first worksite of the High Speed Rail project and is now nearing completion. The superstructure is finished and crews have started work on the barrier walls. This project should be complete later this year. Like Road 27, Avenue 8 is an overcrossing that will allow safe passage for vehicles over existing and future rail lines. MSE walls are complete and crews are currently working to finish the embankments. Rising waters from the long wet winter have moved the focus of work at the San Joaquin River to the pergola structure near Herndon Avenue in the city of Fresno. It will allow high-speed trains to pass over Union Pacific tracks. Crews are currently drilling into the earth to install rebar columns and steel culverts. There are many that will need to be completed. The pergola itself will be built on more than 50 columns. In the heart of Fresno, the State Route 99 Realignment Project is well underway. This section of highway between Ashland and Clinton Avenues is being moved 100 feet to the west to make room for High Speed Rail tracks. You can see, some paving is already complete. Utility relocation, electrical work, including the installation of lighting and the installation of curbs and gutters, are underway along various sections of the project. You can now start to see the outlines of the Fresno Trench in central Fresno. A section of the future trench is now lined with rebar columns. Drilling activities are moving north toward the start of the trench between Belmont and Olive Avenues. Meanwhile, crews working at the connected State Route 180 passageway are installing temporary structures to stabilize the area as they construct the box that will allow high-speed trains to pass under the highway. A little more than a year after the demolition of the old one-way Tuolumne Street Bridge began, the new two-way bridge is nearly complete. The bridge deck is complete with work continuing on barrier walls. Utility relocation is also underway at the east side of the bridge. Once complete, crews will finish the abutment, joining the bridge to the pre-existing street. The Cedar Viaduct is the program's most visible structure as it sits just yards from State Route 99. Workers from Southern California-based Martinez Steel were installing rebar on one section, preparing for the next concrete pour, while other workers from Bay Area-based Schwager-Davis were completing pre-tensioning work, pulling these metal cables with more than 8,000 pounds of pressure. Work on this project is moving beyond North Avenue, where crews have started the construction of columns and abutments. Construction Package 2.3 extends from American Avenue in Fresno to the Kings-Tolari County Line. Just this week, crews have restarted a road improvement project, which includes asphalt overlay work on Road 40. That work is expected to last several weeks. And finally, in Construction Package 4, crews are busy with right-of-way and geotechnical work. Here we see crews potholing, a procedure used to find utility lines as they prepare for construction later this year.
So that gives a quick understanding of the level of work that's currently underway and that work is generating significant economic impact in the Central Valley, coming from the over 1,000 construction jobs that are currently active on the project, the labor income associated with that that you see here, and ultimately, the economic impact that comes from that investment in the Central Valley. As has always been the goal of the High Speed Rail Authority, small business in California has a major role in the development of the statewide program. The authority, as you may recall, has a 30% small business goal, 10% disadvantaged business goal, and a 3% disabled veteran business goal. That really has become a mandate more than a goal. All of our primary contractors have met or exceeded those goals. And as you see here, we have over 300 small California businesses currently engaged in the development of the statewide program. And we work to actively maintain that by providing resources and opportunities for small business to connect with the program on a regular basis. We hold regular pre-bid conferences, regular small business conferences, opportunities for small California businesses to connect with prime contractors that may ultimately be doing work on the project, and we try and do that on a regular basis. So how we arrived at where we are is really led by the 2016 Business Plan that was the first fiscally constrained plan, that is to say, laid out a plan for the development of the first revenue service extending from San Francisco to Bakersfield by 2025 with the investment that we currently have available in Prop 1A, cap and trade, and federal funds that are allowing us to complete that first revenue section, and that's what we're in the midst of developing. The work that we are completing here is really aimed at the environmental clearance of the project section from San Francisco to Merced, roughly 123 miles. That environmental review is occurring in two project sections, San Francisco to San Jose, which is largely the 51-mile Caltrain corridor, where we're partnering with Caltrain on both the electrification of Caltrain and the follow-on high-speed service in the Peninsula Corridor, and then a separate high-speed system from the Deardon station in San Jose to roughly eight miles east of Merced, where we'll connect with the Central Valley Y work shown here in the teal box on the screen that's being constructed as a component of the work that's being done in the Central Valley. We'll have at completion four stations that will be operating within the Transbay Transit Center. Ultimately, if Transbay isn't accessible because the downtown extension isn't completed yet, that the Transbay Joint Powers Authority is currently working on and we're partnering with the TJPA on that. We will stop initially at the Fourth and King Station, but ultimately operate out of the Transbay Transit Center. The Millbrae SFO Station connecting to San Francisco International Airport, the San Jose-Deardon Station, where we'll have as many, in fact, more transit connections, multimodal connections than even the Transbay Transit Center. And finally, the Gilroy Station, where we hope to develop, in partnership with the city of Gilroy, develop an activity center in and around the station that's developed there. And Gilroy could very well become a regional hub in its own right as future rail services are contemplated over the hill to Salinas and Monterey and Hollister. As I mentioned, we've been wanting to fill in the gaps of how we got here and have put together a short video describing how we've arrived at the alternatives and really arrived at blended service in the Peninsula Corridor. And this will give you a little indication of how we did that.
In 1996, the California High Speed Rail Authority was created by the state legislature to plan and design a system connecting the state's major metropolitan areas.
Fast forward to 2004. That's when the...
That's when the Authority and the Peninsula Corridor Joint Powers Board, which owns and operates Caltrain, entered into a Memorandum of Understanding, or MOU, to work together to plan a shared corridor between San Francisco and San Jose. A year later, in 2005, the statewide program environmental impact report and environmental impact statement, also known as EIR/ EIS, was approved, outlining the entire proposed high-speed rail system. In 2008, California voters passed Proposition 1A, the Bond Act to Finance High-Speed Rail in California. Also approved that year was the Bay Area to Central Valley Program, EIR/ EIS, which first identified Pacheco Pass as the preferred alternative to connect the Bay Area to the Central Valley. Then in 2009, the Authority and the Peninsula Corridor Joint Powers Board signed another agreement to identify a plan supporting both high-speed rail and a modernized Caltrain service. These original plans called for a fully grade-separated, four-track system between San Francisco and San Jose. The same year, the Authority and the Federal Railroad Administration issued a Notice of Preparation and a Notice of Intent, or NOP/ NOI, initiating the environmental review process. That kicked off a public scoping period, during which time the Authority collected nearly 900 public comments on its plans for the peninsula. That year, meetings with the public, technical working groups, and other stakeholders were also held throughout the corridor. In 2012, after listening to concerns from community leaders and residents about a four-track system, the Authority called for a blended system in our 2012 Business Plan, and the Legislature passed Senate Bill 1029, which provided funding for Caltrain electrification as part of a blended system with high-speed rail. In 2013, the Authority and Caltrain signed a new agreement outlining the general path for advancing the Caltrain Modernization Program and the Blended System, and replacing the agreements signed in 2004 and 2009. In 2014, the Legislature and the Governor reaffirmed their commitment to high-speed rail by providing an ongoing revenue stream through the state's cap-and-trade proceeds. In 2015, the Authority renewed its public outreach efforts in the Bay Area, hosting community open-house meetings, working group meetings, and reaching out to specific communities through the Authority's Environmental Justice Program, developed in compliance with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964. All of these outreach efforts continued through 2015 and are still ongoing today. Last year, the Authority's 2016 Business Plan was adopted, outlining a new plan to offer initial passenger service from the Central Valley to the Silicon Valley by 2025. Also in 2016, the Authority and the FRA issued a new NOP/ NOI, initiating the environmental review process for the Blended System from San Francisco to San Jose. That kicked off another public scoping period, during which time more than 150 public comments were submitted to the Authority. Lastly, in 2016, the Authority signed a funding agreement and supplement to the 2012 nine-party MOU. It outlines the Authority's commitment to provide Caltrain with an additional $113 million for electrification, bringing the Authority's total contribution to $713 million. That brings us to 2017. You'll be seeing more community outreach events and stakeholder engagement to make sure you're informed and involved, as environmental and technical analysis moves forward. Late this summer, we expect to present the staff-recommended preferred alternative to our Board of Directors. Then we plan to issue the draft environmental document, which will include a public hearing and a 45-day comment period. We encourage you to stay in touch and share your thoughts with us throughout this process. Community feedback has been and will remain critical to building the nation's first high-speed rail system right here in California.
So that gives us a little understanding of how we arrived at blended service and all the work that's gone into the development of the project to date. As the video mentioned, our current schedule has us in the yellow-boarded box you see here. We're in the midst of design and technical analysis into the depths of the detail on environmental review. We're looking at not just the alignment, but the station footprints. We'll be doing ongoing outreach over the course of the next year. Our next milestone will be the identification of a preliminary preferred alternative in August of this year, followed by the release of the draft environmental document by the end of this year, make the draft available for public comment by the end of this year, and then work toward completion of our environmental analysis by late summer of 2018. In terms of stakeholder outreach, that effort will be ongoing. We have just completed additional open-house meetings. Along the peninsula, we will continue community working groups. We are, as one of the speakers earlier mentioned, having a local policymaker group meeting tomorrow evening. We alternate those LPMG sessions with the Caltrain Modernization Program, so we provide a high-speed rail update every other month at the LPMG. We work with the city, county, and state staff on a regular meeting in support of the local policymaker group meeting. And then we are in the midst of ongoing community working groups, technical working groups with each of the communities. We take opportunities like this to meet with cities and city leadership as often as we possibly can, and really invite your direction in terms of other either neighborhood groups, stakeholder groups that we could reach out to and meet with on a consistent basis as we go through this process, to ensure that we're getting as a broad cross-section of community comment as we possibly can. Just briefly, in terms of how we narrowed the alternatives to blended service, we have looked at quite a wide swath of alternatives over the life of the analysis, dating all the way back to the program review, environmental review that was mentioned in the video, including alignments like the Altamont Corridor and impacts associated with Altamont, the Highway 101 and Interstate 280 corridors as potential alignments for high-speed rail. As the video pointed out, initially looking at a fully grade-separated, four-track system that had high-speed rail completely separate from the Caltrain commuter system, a new tunnel alignment to connect into downtown San Francisco as a possibility, and also looked at the potential of a mid-peninsula station either in Palo Alto, Mountain View, or Redwood City, to respond to the demands of all of the jobs in the mid-peninsula. So all of those components of the project have been reviewed to this point, and we've ultimately landed on the blended service that we're in the midst of analyzing and partnering with Caltrain to complete their electrification project. So the goal here was to maintain the smallest footprint of operation for future high-speed service, minimize the impacts to property owners and the environment. We're currently looking at a combination of alternatives specific to particular elements of the project that I'll touch on in a minute, and the initial stations, as I mentioned, operation out of Fourth and King in advance of getting to the Transbay Transit Center, the Millbrae SFO Station, and the Deardon Station. Let's see. Okay, I'll get to that in a moment. Our goals here are to root, really, the core principle behind blended service is to reduce the overall cost of the investment in increasing capacity in the Peninsula Corridor, increasing that ridership. As you all know, Caltrain is already oversubscribed, and part of the goal of completing electrification is to expand their opportunity to increase capacity, and it really is about increasing the capacity in the Peninsula Corridor. It's not about high-speed rail or commuter rail. It's about ensuring that we create an opportunity for folks to get off of 101, use rail options as a commute option more effectively and consistently. Obviously, the environmental benefits associated with a clean, green electric system, and looking at ways to improve the safety in the Peninsula Corridor. As the video identified, the Authority's committed $713 million to the Caltrain electrification project, in addition to $105 million for the completion of Positive Train Control, which is currently under construction, as well as additional state investment of $20 million to the electrification program. Briefly, the project alternatives that we're refining through this environmental analysis include the location of a light maintenance facility in Brisbane, and essentially, the Baylands properties, working with the City of Brisbane and the property owners at that location to identify a site that could work for a light maintenance facility for the operation of the high-speed system in the Peninsula Corridor. We're working with Caltrain, and I want to stress that Caltrain, as the owner of the Peninsula Corridor system, is really providing the leadership on the best way to achieve a blended operation. Our operations teams are working with Michelle Bouchard and her operations team to ensure that the four trains per hour per direction, four high-speed trains per hour per direction that go into service once the corridor's fully electrified, works in tandem with the Caltrain commuter system and the expansion of Caltrain commuter electrified service, and doesn't negatively impact Caltrain commuter service in any way, doesn't degrade Caltrain service. So we're working very closely together to identify the best solutions as it relates to passing tracks in this case, and really, to all of the improvements in the corridor, but specifically as it relates to the day-to-day operation and scheduling of trains to ensure that we maximize that capacity that I alluded to earlier. We are also looking at two options for the alignments getting into and out of Deardon Station at the south end of the Peninsula Corridor, looking at, in the event that we're getting into Deardon Station in an aerial alignment, at Deardon, we're looking at two possible alignments, an aerial and an out-grade alignment. We're looking at two viaduct options that look at different alternatives, ways to minimize the impacts of a viaduct alignment by making the alignment shorter, looking at one alternative that extends from the Santa Clara Station into Deardon, and one that extends from I-880 into Deardon. I mentioned safety. One of the primary elements of the follow-on work that we'll be doing with Caltrain in the Peninsula Corridor is extending their fencing program and minimizing pedestrian access to the corridor, trying to improve safety by completing the fencing along the corridor, as well as installing four quadrant gates at all of the crossings. Excuse me. The Federal Railroad Administration doesn't require fully grade-separated crossings until trains operate at 125 miles an hour or better. The trains in the Peninsula Corridor, both Caltrain commuter and future high-speed trains, will be operating at 110 miles an hour in the corridor, but we want to take steps to try and increase the safety of the corridor to as great an extent possible, and then work with local communities over time to grade-separate all of the crossings. Obviously, we all agree that the best outcome for the entire system is to fully grade-separate all 42 crossings in the Peninsula Corridor, but that is going to be an effort that we take on over time. Both the cost of that effort and the time that it would take to construct those facilities is significant, so by working with the local communities, we can identify what their specific needs are, but in the meantime, take steps to improve the safety condition while we begin operation in the corridor. Some of the common elements of the alternatives that we're looking at include the Fourth and King Station, the Millbrae Station, operating at 110 miles an hour, both for Caltrain and high-speed, four Caltrain commuter trains per hour per direction, and four, I'm sorry, six Caltrain commuter trains per hour per direction, and four high-speed trains per hour per direction. We're looking to modify the holdout rules at the Burlingame Broadway Station and the Atherton Station. That is where trains are held out in order to accommodate passengers accessing trains that are stopped at the station because of the way that the platforms are situated at those stations. We'll work with those cities to modify the platforms at those locations and eliminate the holdout rule, allowing trains to pass through more effectively.
Just a quick question.
Yes, sir.
The staff report mentioned that Stanford Station is a whole other South Station.
It's right at, it's virtually at the stadium site itself, just, just.
It's Town and Country.
Yeah, Town and Country, that's a great, yeah. Yeah, it's Town and Country, and so we'd be working, yeah, only on game day, so it's only event-driven, so we'd be working with Stanford to address those issues rather than modify that particular location. Briefly, on outreach, as I mentioned, this is an ongoing effort. We'll be continuing outreach. We just completed a series of meetings in San Francisco, Mountain View, and San Mateo. We're in the midst of completing outreach in the San Jose to Merced section, but this is virtually a bridge-maintenance approach to community outreach. We begin at one end, complete the route, and begin again. And again, the point to be made is that we are happy to come speak with and present and have a conversation with any part of the community, any neighborhood, any stakeholder group that is interested in engaging in a discussion about the project or has concerns, questions about the project. So wherever possible, we are more than happy to do that. You see some of our recent activities that we've engaged in here. Obviously, it includes as broad a cross-section of folks as we can get to, the business community, local neighborhoods, local councils, and the like. That's a brief update of where we are. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do you have some questions?
Yeah, absolutely. We're in the public first.
So I have four speakers. First speaker is Stephen Rosenblum, followed by Herb Borak.
My name's Stephen Rosenblum. I live near the California Avenue Caltrain Station, and I've been speaking before the Rail Committee and the City Council for many years about the High-Speed Rail project, probably as long as the project's been active. And I keep making the point, and everybody realizes, that whatever is done with high-speed rail will affect the environment of Palo Alto for a century at least. It will be here for a long time. And ever since its founding as a city, Palo Alto's been divided by train tracks, and I think it has been a situation which was livable during the time it was a farming community, but now that it's densely settled and highly urbanized, I don't think it's any longer an acceptable situation to have grade-level crossings, especially when we're talking about 10 Caltrains in each direction, that's 20 total trains, and four high-speed rail trains in each direction, making 28 trains per hour. That's almost two minutes per train. I don't see how we're going to have any gate uptime at all at the four crossings. I mean, you can engineer all you want, but with trains going 110 miles an hour, there's no way they're going to allow any car or truck to be on the track and get hit by a train going at that speed, and certainly, there's no way it's going to stop. So I don't think that there's any way that we can countenance having quad crossings or any kind of other grade-level crossing in Palo Alto, not only for safety reasons, but also for communication between both sides of the city. People won't even be able to walk across or bicycle across the tracks in a situation like that. I think Palo Alto's providing a great benefit to the people of the state by having high-speed rail go through our community. I think the people of the state should be willing to spend the money to make sure that they mitigate these environmental impacts on our environment. The council has spent its own money, the city's own money, to study grade-level crossings, and in spite of the fact that I've been to many of these meetings that Mr. Tripousis has talked about, I see no evidence that Caltrain has paid, I mean, that high-speed rail has paid any attention to strong requests from the communities to grade-separate. They argue that it's too expensive. Well, if it's too expensive, then they need to get more money, and I urge the council and the rail committee to see that these ideas are pressed forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Herb Borak, followed by Richard Brant.
Yeah, let's talk about grade separations and passing tracks within the context of the environmental review. The presentation referred to a preferred alternative, but whatever alternative that's preferred in the environmental impact statement and report will have analyzed with a range of feasible alternatives. That will include the various passing track options that have been discussed by high-speed rail. So the fact that a three-track passing track through Palo Alto is not the preferred alternative in the project description does not mean that it's been ruled out. At the local policymaker group meeting in, two months ago, that Councilmember Tanaka attended, he asked how to get Caltrain attended, he asked how to get Caltrain and High-Speed Rail undergrounded, and the response was that the federal standard that is followed by High-Speed Rail is that the least environmentally damaging, practicable alternative, and that undergrounding from High-Speed Rail's perspective does not result in that, either underground tracks or an underground Dirdon Station. So that talking about putting anything undergrounding means everything undergrounding, including freight. So from High-Speed Rail's perspective, you're not going to get the tracks undergrounded. And in terms of the grade, from their point of view, except for going to Transbay Terminal, which is underground, so it has to go underground there, or not wanting to have to change all the trackage and bus routes near Dirdon Station, where they're going to have a viaduct, everything's going to be at grade for tracks. Now, the way to get a project sponsor, whether it's Caltrain or High-Speed Rail, to address the funding for grade separations is through the environmental review process. I didn't think that we did that with Caltrain, and I think that was a mistake, and that's our only choice here with High-Speed Rail. I agree, Mr. Rosenblum, the previous speaker, that it's not our responsibility to pay for the grade separations, it's the project sponsors, which is, in High-Speed Rail's case, it's the state. So from the point of view, what we already know is that this idea that we should be having all these meetings about how we're going to fund grade separations, as if it's a given that it's our responsibility to do it, I think is a mistake. And, thank you.
Thank you. Richard Brand, followed by Nadia Nyak.
Good morning again, Richard Brand. I appreciate this presentation from Mr. Trupousis. Interestingly, a lot of this discussion and the need for funding, as Herb kind of addressed, would not at all be necessary if the alternative route, which was mentioned in the presentation through the Altamont Pass, was chosen. That route would take High-Speed Rail up the Central Valley, over the Altamont Pass, which is ACE trains, Amtrak, UP. It's an existing very Class 1 rail line going between San Jose and ultimately Merced now. If that route had been chosen, we wouldn't have this problem at all because the interface to San Francisco would occur in Redwood City. Connection coming from Fremont to, over the bay on the Old Dumbarton, right away into Redwood City, and then up to San Francisco. The Y would occur at Fremont, where the trains would then have gone down the existing Amtrak, ACE, UP, right away into San Jose. This would have been much less expensive than building a very expensive tunnel through the Pacheco Pass. Unfortunately, the people, our friends down in San Jose, for which the rail station is named down there, elected to have this as their option to go directly, and so we're struggling with this. I just want to, this is, you know, that train's left the station, literally, this decision has been made, but I do agree that we shouldn't be fighting for funding for a decision that was made by another body to take the more expensive route, including Pacheco Pass tunnel and the grade crossings we're struggling with today. Thank you.
Thank you. So Nadia Nyak, followed by Dean Levin.
Good morning. Good morning, Ben. How are you?
Great.
So I was hoping through the chair, we could get some questions answered by Ben today because he'd have more detail. So despite the fact, as Herb Borak said, they're not looking at the midline long-passing tracks as one of the preferred alternatives, we have not yet seen any detailed maps that show exactly how far into Palo Alto that line would go. I have zoomed and zoomed to the best of my max ability, and I can get, it looks like it passes Calav, but we, obviously, we as a city should request to get a lot more details on that. I also wanted to know from Ben why the joint working group that's looking at Caltrain operations, the joint study that they're doing, why are they not considering more than six trains an hour for Caltrain? Caltrain's already at five. When they electrify, they'll get six, but we expect that to be at pretty full capacity really quickly, and none of the scenarios in the SMA joint report that they've put out, which is the Swiss company that High-Speed Rail has hired, has looked at a scenario of more than six Caltrain trains in the future, and as, if I put on my Friends of Caltrain hat, that doesn't seem correct. I mean, we need to have a robust future Caltrain, and it makes sense for us not to cap that. Lastly, I would just point out to the committee, Ben reported that the FRA needs you to fully grade-separate a corridor at 125 miles an hour, but you should also know that in the United States, there is no place where we operate 20 trains an hour, even at 110 miles per hour. That is not grade-separated. So there are other places, like where the Acela is, that the trains go by at less than 125 and don't need to be grade-separated, but there are not 20 an hour in a densely populated community. So there is a potential that either CPUC or the FRA will decide that that's actually not going to be appropriate in the future, and we should keep our eye on that. But specifically through the chair, if we could ask for Ben to give us a detail on how far down that midline passing track goes into Palo Alto, and also, when is the 2018 business plan due? Thank you.
Great. Dean Levin, followed by Tony Karaska.
Good morning to Ben Trupousis and the committee, Dean Levin, Friends of Caltrain, and the item relating to the blended system that I'd like to draw attention to is the discussion of the passing tracks and how that would work with regard to the blended service. It was great to hear Mr. Trupousis say that they're working closely with Caltrain to avoid negative impacts to Caltrain service, and I have up on my computer the slides that are going to be presented tomorrow night in San Carlos, and there's a slide that says the preferred alternative is no passing tracks, which would require Caltrain to periodically wait for High-Speed Rail to pass at existing four-track sections. So the slide is saying Caltrain trains will be sitting and waiting for the fast trains to pass, and a detailed slide explaining that, at least the last version that I saw in January, said that the Caltrain trains would be delayed by an average of, I think it was six to seven minutes, and if that's the case, we would be losing with the blended system the speed that we're picking up with electrification. So here's a project that, you know, our region and state and the feds, if they will, will be spending $2 billion on, and then losing a significant component of the benefit of that project. That would not be good. So would really urge this body's attention, would urge, you know, more detail being made available by High-Speed Rail and Caltrain to enable, you know, clear discussion of the different choices and trade-offs of passing tracks, including how to make sure that we get better local service and not worse local service when the High-Speed Rail is implemented. Thank you.
Our last speaker, Tony Karaska.
Tony Karaska, 1885, El Camino, Palo Alto. My issue is that I've lived here in Palo Alto for 40 years. The train tracks were permeable at that time. You could walk across them, the two sides of it connected. As we move forward into more service, which we desperately need, this permeability has decreased significantly and steadily over the last 40 years. I urge you to look at grade separations and make it convenient for the pedestrian. That is our biggest open space, the sidewalks. Make them comfortable, make it interesting for people to walk across this barrier that's happening now. I think this project will last 100 years. I think we've got to do it right now. There's no point doing it wrong without grade separations and then saying, someday later, we'll fix it. That has not been Palo Alto's character, not in my 40 years of looking at development review in this community. So please take the time and connect it for seniors, for younger people, connect the two sides of our community well, so that it's interesting and good. Thank you.
All right. Back to the committee. Do we have questions or comments?
All right. Why not? So if we don't get Caltrain electrification, if the feds don't fund it, how does that affect the High-Speed Rail plans?
Excuse me. Obviously, electrification is a linchpin of extending high-speed service from San Jose to Dirdon to the Transbay Transit Center. That's something that all of the funding partners, the authority, all of the counties, MTC, are engaged in and committed to. That hasn't and won't wane. So our expectation is that in the event that the federal funds aren't forthcoming, that we're going to work together to identify another strategy to fully fund electrification and allow it to move forward.
So I understand, at least from, I guess from Caltrain, that if they don't get the money by, what is it, June 31st?
June 30th.
The whole thing falls apart, so.
Well, the current design-build contracts, and I would defer to Caltrain on the exact detail of this, but the current design-build contracts would not be extended after June 30th. So the goal is to identify the funding prior to that, so we can move forward with the current design builder. That doesn't mean that a follow-on bidding process can't be put together in short order in the event that we have to extend the time, but our, all of the partners' goals is to identify the funding sources, and the state and Secretary Kelly's office is very engaged in that conversation to try and address the issue before that deadline lapses.
So do you have any more information about where we are with the feds or where the process is?
We, Director Hartnett has a weekly update call with the partners. They are advocating vigorously with our federal partners, certainly support from people like Senator Orrin Hatch, who will house a facility in Utah to construct the trains, is very committed to moving the project forward, but there's no new information about where the funds will show themselves on the upcoming budget. So we're looking at, really in the next couple of weeks, by the time the May revise comes out, the hope is that the full funding agreement will be part of the final budget to be voted on by the Congress.
Okay, so if everything goes according to the schedule that you laid out there, what actually, what kind of construction, or what actually happens on the San Jose to, well, why don't we just say, what happens through Palo Alto in terms of what construction looks like, and when does it start, and what does construction mean, since we already have the tracks?
In terms of follow-on construction for High-Speed, we're, part of the work that we're doing with Caltrain now is to identify those locations where there would require some track modifications to increase speeds, where there are turns that don't accommodate higher speeds. Passing tracks, once those specific locations are identified. In terms of grade separations, the authority has committed, as most of you know, funds to the city of San Mateo for the grade separations at 25th, 28th, and 31st avenues. We're partnering with the county of San Mateo and the city on those grade separations. So that grade separation work, for example, would be underway, but in terms of, specific to Palo Alto, it would really be dependent on where we land in terms of passing tracks and how far those passing tracks extend down the peninsula.
So I never see pictures with Palo Alto on those passing tracks when I see this stuff, but yet everyone sort of indicates we may still put it in Palo Alto.
We're happy to provide more detail, as Ms. Nyak suggested, about the extent of the passing tracks. The three alternatives that we're looking at are what are generally identified as the short middle four, the long middle three, and the long middle four. Palo Alto is certainly a part of the long middle three and the long middle four. The challenge with passing tracks, which is why working with Caltrain's operations team, along with our Network Rail operations team, to land on a scenario that potentially minimizes the need for passing tracks and still accommodates blended service in the same way that it's done most predominantly in Europe, where the operation of the trains is the way that you mitigate impacts or delays on the system, not by providing additional The reason we're looking at that as an option is because there are significant trade-offs to infrastructure in the corridor, and the goal of the blended system issue, while known by Mr. Maras, has been to minimize the impacts from a construction standpoint to the Peninsula communities. So the trade-offs here are, regardless of where the passing tracks are identified and however long they are, there will be impacts associated with the development of those passing tracks. Our goal is to try and minimize that, and if we can do it operationally and still maintain the integrity of both the commuter system and the high-speed system, that's our goal.
When do you expect that final decision to be made?
Well, our, as I mentioned, the preliminary preferred will be in August, so our target is August at the moment.
This August?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then when again would you expect construction for the High-Speed Rail part of this to then occur?
If we, if we're able to maintain our schedule and complete the environmental review by late next summer, my expectation would be that early to mid-2019, construction would begin.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one quick question for our staff. As we do go forward with our CSS process on grade sep here in Palo Alto, are we considering the different passing track alternatives, or have we kind of stuck with one?
We would have to consider whatever is still under consideration by the authority and by Caltrain.
So we're not going to get any certainty on that until August, then?
I wondered if you could give us a little update on what's happening in Southern California?
Well, as you may know, along with the investments in completing the environmental review here and the construction in the Central Valley, the authorities committed over $4 billion in investments to improvements along the Metro Lynn Corridor, where we'll also be running a blended system in Southern California. The Rosecrans-Markmore grade separation project, which is a large at-grade crossing currently and a significant safety issue, the authorities committed funds to that grade separation project, which is currently moving toward construction. There are other similar improvements that are being made there. We're also looking at investments in modifying L.A. Union Station. So there are investments in advance of the actual construction of the system that are currently being completed. The goal is, my Southern California counterpart, Michelle Bam, the regional director for Southern California, is in the midst of completing the environmental review for the Palmdale to Burbank, Burbank to L.A. Union Station in Anaheim, Los Angeles to Anaheim project section. So she's on a very similar timetable to what we are on in terms of trying to complete the environmental review for those sections in their entirety by the end of next year. So once that's completed, the entire Phase 1 project from San Francisco to L.A. Union Station in Anaheim will be shelf-ready, so as funds make themselves available, whether they're cap-and-trade or 3P funds and investment or bond funds, as they're made available, we can move forward with construction, once those are shelf-ready.
And so for the quad gate crossings, I guess, how much are you expecting to fund per crossing?
I don't have the actual dollar amount, but we expect to fund quad gates, period. We're not looking for any local investment on the development of the four quadrant gates.
Like an order of like $100,000 a crossing?
Probably closer to $250,000, just back of the napkin, but I'm happy to get a more detailed answer for you on that.
And is it the same, same solution, quad gates, regardless if there's passing tracks there or not?
The short answer is yes, and we'll have to work with the local community and, in this case, the California Public Utilities Commission, to ensure that even the addition of four quadrant gates, given the expanse of a crossing with four tracks, meets their safety standards, so.
So there's no standard today? It says if you have four tracks, it has to be grade-separated or?
Well, there's some debate about whether or not the PUC has a directive or guidelines that require that. Our expectation is that we'd be able to address the safety concern with four quadrant gates. Again, the safest alternative is a fully grade-separated alternative, and part of our analysis will determine the impact of whether there are analysis will determine the impact of whether they're grade-separated or not, the impacts of those crossings. One of the speakers talked about the gate downtime impacts. Those are significant impacts or significant potential impacts at grade crossings from a transportation standpoint. If there are well beyond significant impacts of those crossings, we need to mitigate those. In some cases, those mitigations may be, may require a grade separation. So, we have to work with the local community to consider that.
Okay. So, you said about $4 billion improvements in Southern California. I think it's like 2.9 in Northern California. Is high-speed rail operating under an assumption of kind of cost per mile in Northern California versus Southern California? Do you deal with that number would be?
In terms of what the level of investment cost per mile is, I don't have that off the top of my head, but I'm happy to get that for you.
Okay, it would be interesting to see.
Certainly. And really, investment per mile as opposed to cost per mile.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, you showed us kind of what's going on in the valley. We're building a lot of grade crossings. Sounds like they're building grade crossings in Southern California. Clearly, we need grade crossings, so, you know, I guess it'll come out as part of the EIR, but I think some kind of matching funds at a minimum. Our county tax funds are not going to be sufficient.
Right, well, and again, the San Mateo project is a good example. We partnered with San Mateo because both the county and the city are investing their own funds in those grade crossing projects. So, it makes it more feasible to fund those in partnership. The, as was pointed out, the costs of fully grade separating 42 crossings in the Peninsular Corridor are significant. So, wherever we can partner to deliver those improvements, it makes those improvements more feasible.
So, back to the passing tracks. So, the option with no passing tracks, I mean, is that, that still enables high-speed rail to meet its time commitment?
That's our expectation, and that's part of the equation, that really, that's a core principle of our operation. The travel time has to be met, the impacts have to be minimized, the effects of no passing tracks, an operation that includes no passing tracks can't, as I said, degrade the proposed commuter system. So, all of those taken together have to provide the outcome we're looking for.
I mean, as one of the speakers said, though, could it degrade the Caltrain efficiency?
That's what we have to avoid. It's not a choice. It won't be a matter of, well, okay, people are just going to have to wait another six minutes. That's what we're trying operationally to avoid, ensure that Caltrain improves its system, improves its operation, and we can operate blended service in a no-passing-track configuration.
So, that means basically that trains, all the trains are running on time and those passing situations occur?
Yeah. The goal, as I said at the outset, is to increase capacity, not minimize it.
Okay. So, I guess there was also the question about, you know, are we basically capping Caltrain at six trains per hour into the future?
Well, that's part of the operations discussion that we're having with Caltrain. Certainly, Caltrain, as a practical matter, offered capacity that would have been theirs on their system. The four slots that have gone to high-speed rail certainly were four slots that could be utilized by the commuter system if high-speed rail wasn't operating. And there is a limit to the number of trains that we can operate in the corridor, but we still think that there is some flexibility in terms of the system's ability to absorb more trains.
Okay. And when is the business plan due, I guess?
I don't have an exact date for the release of the 2018 plan, but I would expect it would be roughly this time next year.
Okay. Great. Well, thank you for coming to present. Does anybody else have any questions, comments?
Thank you for having me. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks. All right, moving on to item number four, which is an update on the upcoming workshop.
All right, thank you, Chair, members of the committee. I'm Josh Mello, the city's chief transportation official. We've been completing a lot of work since the last rail committee meeting on preparing for the May 20th community workshop number one, and I wanted to give you an update on our planning efforts and also get some feedback from you on the structure of the workshop, potential options for outreach to the community, and some other items as well. So, if you remember, at the last rail committee meeting, you authorized us to move forward with Stage One of the context-sensitive solutions alternatives analysis. And our main goal in Stage One is to convene a public workshop, which has been scheduled on May 20th at the Mitchell Park Community Center. The goal of that workshop, I'll get a little more in detail as we go through, is to bring everyone in the community together and provide a little bit of background information on the rail corridor in Palo Alto, existing conditions, some future constraints that we've identified, and then also begin to discuss the problems around the current railroad corridor, and then start to talk about some evaluation criteria that we could use to determine success in the future with our rail program. As I mentioned, the workshop is currently scheduled for a Saturday, May 20th. It would begin at 10:00 a.m., and we would have a working lunch. It would be a catered event, and then we would reconvene after lunch and do some work around the performance measures and problem definition, and break at about 2:00 p.m. It'll be at the Mitchell Park Community Center Palo Alto Room. That room holds up to, I think, 200?
Yeah, 200.
200 people. We're expecting about 100, but we can accommodate 200 in that room. Again, the purpose would be to have some presentations in the morning to begin the conversation around what has occurred prior, what work has occurred previous to this, also some of the operational constraints along the corridor, and then we'd have a working lunch followed by some interactive sessions in the afternoon. This will be the community's introduction to the rail program. It's, you know, really intended to be a soft introduction where we can help feel out the tone of the community and help craft, you know, the next stage of the public engagement process. So, what we currently have on the agenda, and we're open to, you know, any comments you may have on this, is Scott from Circle Point would give an introduction and then an agenda overview, and then we would like the mayor and Chair Dubois to provide a brief overview of the rail program and explain why, you know, why we're there. And then we would move into a project background section, and I would like to lead a visual survey of the existing grade crossings and the areas where we have new grade crossings that are on the books, and, you know, show some photos, talk about some of the circulation issues. And then we could also, you know, present some of the traffic and circulation data that we have developed as part of that circulation analysis using our travel demand model. So, we would talk about existing conditions, and then we would talk about, you know, if we don't do anything, what does it look like 10 years down the line, 20 years down the line? That brief overview and intro by the mayor and the chair would be followed by a working lunch. Our goal would be to mix people up during lunch and get them to talk to some, you know, folks that they may not normally talk to, and continue the conversation over lunch. And then in the afternoon, Scott and facilitators from the project team, city staff, as well as the consultant team, would lead breakout sessions at tables where we would identify the, you know, some of the problems that people experience in the rail, along the rail corridor, and try to get to the heart of the matter of what is the problem we're actually trying to solve. And, you know, that's a very important first step in the CSS process. And then we would talk about how do we define success? So, these are the problems, you know, at what level do we want to solve those problems and which problems have priority over others? And then we'd have a report back at 1:30 and a Q and A, and we've actually reserved the room until 3:00 p.m., I believe. So, we don't expect to cut people off. We would allow the conversation to continue until it, you know, ended organically, and we have the room until 3:00 o'clock. We don't want to artificially constrain the conversation. I think people are going to have a lot to say at that, on that day. So, we've developed a brand. This is an image of the postcard that we've developed, and again, we're open to your comments. We're calling it the Connecting Palo Alto. That would be the brand for the whole rail program. Again, we don't want to have any preconceived notions about what the solutions are or what the problem is, so this is a very general kind of brand that gets to the heart of the issue, we think, which is reconnecting the city across the rail corridor. The first, you know, the front page of the brochure has some photos of our existing stations and grade crossings, a map of the corridor with the existing conditions, and then a half-mile buffer along the corridor. And we would actually, we're recommending mailing this to all addresses within a half-mile buffer of the corridor, and that's actually about 18,000 addresses. And the cost for that mailing would be about $13,000. So, we are open to, you know, reducing that number, expanding it if you think we should, you know, expand the buffer or reduce the buffer. And the back is an invitation for them to participate in not only the meeting on May 20th, but also the entire Connecting Palo Alto process. And we've created a web link, citypalooalto.org/connectingpaloalto, and that's the place where we would enable people to sign up for the email list. We would also have updated information, interactive surveys. That would be the one-stop shop for anybody who wanted to get involved in the Connecting Palo Alto campaign. We're planning to do an email blast. We have several email lists that we maintain in the Transportation Division related to bike projects, parking, all things transportation. We'd use that as well as any email list that the city manager's office maintains for neighborhood organizations and advocates. That website, website is incorrect. I apologize. It's citypalooalto.org/connectingpaloalto. Rail was already taken by our rail safety initiative. We'll do a media advisory. We're already reaching out to Palo Alto Daily News, Palo Alto Online, and the Daily Post. We're hoping they'll run some articles in advance of May 20th. We'll also be doing regular posts on Nextdoor to invite people out to the May 20th event, and a big push on social media as well. And then I've also invited, I've reached out to Mid Penn Media Center, and we're going to ask them to record the event. And we've recently uploaded a bunch of files and videos from some previous rail events that happened a couple of years ago, and we'll be uploading those to the Connecting Palo Alto website as well. We're going to do some interactive surveying at the workshop, so there's a tool called Swiftly, Siftly, excuse me, Meeting Sift, which enables people to use their smartphones to actually answer survey questions in real time at the meeting, and then it shows the results up on the screen. It's a good icebreaker, and it's a good way to keep people engaged throughout the process. So, we'll be asking some key questions at the workshop, you know, about where people live, what are their top concerns. We're going to use the workshop as a way to gauge the public's opinion on how we can keep them involved throughout the process. So, we don't want the workshop to just end and people to walk away and not know the next steps and not have any follow-up. So, we're actually going to be asking some pretty delving questions about how do we keep you engaged? What's the best way for you to receive information? Would you be interested in participating in a kind of a standing group that could meet? And we'll also be able to identify people that could potentially be on some type of citizen advisory committee if we elect to move forward with that. We're also going to be doing informational interviews. So, Gary Toth recommended that we have an open-house type format at City Hall with city staff, where individuals who can't make the May 20th meeting can come in and visit with us. I've set aside two days on my calendar, entire days between now and May 20th, where we're going to invite members of the community in. We're going to have two rooms and be able to interview two individuals at once, and we have a series of questions that were developed by Gary that help us gauge their view of the existing problems. It touches on some of the constraints that we may have moving forward and also solicits their feedback on what our future stages should look like as far as community engagement. And this is a very, this is a draft list of stakeholders that we would invite in for interviews. After this meeting, feel free to email me any individuals you think we should invite in for interviews. This is not meant to be a all-encompassing list. We're certainly open to inviting other individuals in. Post-workshop, we'll be compiling data, the surveys, the interview, the interactive sessions. We're going to prepare a workshop summary, which we will come back to the rail committee before doing any additional work, and we will present that summary to the rail committee. We're going to take a little bit of a hiatus on public engagement over the summer while people travel on vacation, but we'll be doing a lot of technical work over the summer. We'll be visiting you, strategizing on how we move forward into Stage Two. I think we'll have to have a pretty robust discussion about what the community engagement process looks like moving forward based on what we learned on May 20th. And then our goal is to have a second community workshop in September, and before then, we may decide that we want to convene the TAC and/or a citizen advisory committee as well. So, with that, I conclude my presentation, and we're open to any questions or comments that you may have regarding the May 20th workshop.
Thanks, Josh. So, let's go to members of the public. I only have one speaker of two. If you want to speak, please get your cards in. So, first speaker is Adina Levin, followed by Nadia Nyak.
Adina Levin, friends of Caltrain. So, a couple of things. One is glad to see people being asked questions about what the goals are and the problems that they want to solve, which is, you know, really prerequisite to coming up with solutions. So, you know, good to frame things in that way. And one additional thought about the community outreach and the noticing people who live, you know, in proximity to the crossings is important, and, you know, these are also paths that are traversed by a very, very wide variety of people in the community who are coming from a little bit further away. So, I would strongly recommend reaching out through the school communities where there's a lot of interest in school kids being able to get safely across the tracks, and also through the business community and TMA and Stanford for people who live and work in the area and also use Caltrain, who can look at the needs from that perspective, who might be coming and going from a little bit further away, but this is a key piece of their path as well. One thing that I am not seeing is questions about land use and the area around the crossings and through the corridor, and, you know, maybe that would wind up coming up later in the prosperous, but one of the topics that logically comes up around, you know, grade separations is also land use in that area, and that might be something to start asking questions about also in terms of people's vision. Thank you.
Nadia Nyak?
Hi, Nadia Nyak with CARD. So, after having attended the VTA meeting and then listening to Ben Tripolis' timeline, and then thinking about the fact that high-speed rail is now saying we may not know about the details of passing tracks until August, I feel like we're, we have a very jammed timeline for what's really a very complicated process. I've been doing this for eight years now, and I would say, even if you put those of us who've been following this for a long time, all in the same room, we probably couldn't agree on a single solution or even definition of a problem. And so, I'm wondering if we could tweak this meeting to be more about sort of a status update for the community of here's where we are, here's where we're hearing, here are the things that we're wrestling with, how do we engage you, the community, how do we sort of go through what's going on? And it gives us time to really prepare some really good materials and maps and what have you that will have a lot more of the data that people are going to be expecting, because what I'm really worried about is you're going to be doing all these great, you know, pre-community meeting interviews, which will most likely tickle probably the 30 most active people in our community, and then you're going to put them in a meeting where the first two hours, you're going to talk at them in kind of big generalities, and then you're going to throw some more technical stuff at them and give them 45-minute breakout sessions and say, "Great, what do you think?" And I just, that seems like a lot, and I'm worried that there, it will, it will actually do the opposite of making them feel engaged. It's going to make them feel actually more rushed, and so it may be better to sort of do some hand-holding and explain to people, "This is what we're struggling with. These are the processes that we're working on." You know, get kind of... of, you can have a lot of, you know, early surveying, but maybe not necessarily have this goal of having a project definition because I don't know that you'll be ready by then. And really, you'll have a lot more data by August or September, whenever the next meeting would be, to be able to come back to the community. And it allows us as a city to work with the other data that Hatch-Mott is developing in terms of the traffic study and the circulation study. It allows us to get maybe some preliminary numbers on what are all the different alternatives that the community members are likely to ask about and what those would mean. And I think we need to be really careful as well about any graphics that we show. So for example, the old Hatch-Mott study had literally specific homes that would be taken out and specific roads that would be closed. I would be super hesitant to put anything like that up at a meeting when you haven't really had a good community conversation yet. And so I guess what I'm encouraging is, given that we've got wiggle room now on VTA and they won't decide until June, given that the High-Speed Rail Authority just said that they will know by August what's happening with those passing tracks, which by the way, on every map I've seen goes south of Churchill, and that's a 67-foot right away, just for the record. And then looking at the fact that, you know, we will have a lot more data by September, it just feels like that might make more sense. Thank you.
Our last speaker, Richard Brand.
Yes, Richard Brand. Looks like the usual suspects here today in what we're talking about. I second what Ms. Nyak said about information for people who are going to come to this meeting and want to know about things that I just learned about in this meeting this morning about this passing track and coming down four tracks into our city, which I was not aware of that situation. So I think that's an important thing for this workshop, to have that information as much as we can. I know we're kind of the tail waiting for the dog to tell us when the passing and the architecture is going to be completed. One of the other things I'd say, though, Josh, is you ought to work with the TMA on this. You know, we've got this group, the TMA, we've established, and we're funding them, and I think that would be, that's part of their domain to work on this and have them involved as well. So, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, so back to the committee. Any questions, comments? Eric, I haven't heard from you much.
Just real quick, I would assume that the nature of this would get a sort of a lot of discussion and questions about other kinds of rail issues than grade separation, you know, quiet zones and project safety net and stuff like that. Is that explicitly part of the agenda, or are you trying to keep it focused on grade separation?
So we're not focusing on any solution at the meeting on May 20th. We're just talking about existing conditions, future conditions, starting to talk about the problem from the community's perspective or problems. And then we're going to talk a little bit about how we would define success as related to those problems. We would certainly entertain any questions the community has about other, you know, treatments besides grade separations, and we'll be prepared to answer and discuss any of those during the Q and A session.
And just an observation, but, you know, a lot of what we're focused on in this room is coming up with a solution to a problem that doesn't completely exist yet, okay, which is 20 trains an hour and so forth, right? And so it may not, that particular problem may not be terribly tangible to a cross-section of the community you invite to this. That's all.
Can I just add something to Josh's comments? You know, we're going to issue an invitation to the community, and people are going to show up for all different kinds of reasons or different levels of knowledge or expertise. And to have a meaningful engagement process, I think we have to meet people where they are and listen to any kind of issue or comment that they raise. So I do think if PSN comes up, or, I mean, TrackWatch, or QuadGates, or NOISE, you know, I don't think we can be dismissive of that. I think we need to collect that. I think that all sort of informs the impact that the existence of this railway in a city affects people. So we have to both sort of be, sort of trying to come back to some of the even sort of bigger things we ultimately got to meet, but I do think, I think we don't want to turn anybody off who shows up right now.
I think that's sort of part of the, part of the, sort of the gestalt here, which is, you know, if people come and ask about this and this and this kind of stuff, I mean, we need to be prepared to, you know, to do something, right? Okay, even if it's not sort of related to what we're talking about here.
Adrian? Thank you. So just a few comments and some questions. So I do want to second, I think Mr. Brand brought up the TMA being involved. I think that would be a helpful stakeholder. I'm a little interested about the fact that we're going to be hosting multiple community workshops, and this is a big problem. You're going to get a different set of people showing up to each one. Like, what's the core constituents we want? And whether the stakeholder group should be involved in these meetings perhaps, even though I know they're not set up yet, we don't really have that group together, and this committee may want to look at what that group is and how it's composed. So there's something there about kind of steadiness among participants. I also actually want to concur with Adina Levin when she mentioned these questions about land use. Eric brought up track safety and Safety Watch. Those are going to be questions these community groups will have and will occur here, even if it's not our main focus of these things. So I think it would be helpful to kind of bring up some of those ancillary context things, whether it's land use, whether it's park space, whether it's track safety, just so the table is set for folks. I think that's it for now, but just those two comments.
Just one quick response. We've thought a lot about how do we maintain continuity? Do we, you know, there was a great idea that actually Ed threw out there, which is people could earn badges for each workshop they come to, which I think is a great idea. But we're thinking very hard about how to, you know, keep people involved. And, you know, the last part of the workshop on May 20th, as well as a big part of the interviews we're going to be doing, is how do you think we can do that effectively? And is it convening a stakeholder group, or is it doing some type of interactive thing where we, you know, reward people who stay engaged? And, I mean, I think our goal is to try to get people who aren't typically engaged in these, so we can hear a wide variety of opinions and diverging interests.
I mean, I think that's important, but we should also acknowledge there are going to be the usual suspects. Some of the folks in this room are probably going to be there, and that's a benefit to us too. And there might be something helpful in terms of getting some agreement from those folks as well, that they can continue on this process. Badges, nice idea.
No hats with pins, though. Great.
I'm good.
So a few comments. I like the idea of badges or achievements, gaming jargon.
You could work on video.
Yeah.
That would scale the conversation.
Unlock Palo Alto. Yeah, hats, real hats. So I know you've got a marketing plan here. It's less than a month away, so I'm a little concerned about getting the word out. I think, just looking at the mailing here, I know it's probably a draft. It's pretty dense. I think we really need a clear call to action. And, you know, your participation is vital. It's kind of buried at the bottom. It's kind of, I would, I would highlight that and pull it up. And the other, the other thing looking at this is the front of it, Connecting Palo Alto. I'm not sure that's, what that means is clear. And I would maybe be very explicit that it's about grade crossing improvements. All right, so I agree, we should be open and allow people to ask questions about all these things, but, you know, the text here is really good. You're kind of framing it around the VTA tax and the need to improve grade crossings. So I would just make sure that's really clear, somebody just looking at a postcard in a stack of mail. I'm a little bit concerned too about the schedule. You know, it's kind of a slow start. I mean, I think if we could start maybe properly at 10, we'd get a little bit more time. I hope in the 10:30 kind of background that we'll, you'll include all the crossings, including Oregon Expressway, Barcadero University, to help frame the question again about kind of east-west connections. I saw in your, in the staff report, there was some discussion possibly about info stations and having people indicate priorities. I'm wondering if we could still do that, just have that up maybe from lunchtime till 3 o'clock and maybe, you know, from 2:00 to 3:00. We could squeeze that in. I think it might be useful to get, I think the instant survey stuff is cool. Maybe that's another way to do it. But some people may be, may be more comfortable with more physical, you know, kind of info stations. I was going to call out outreach to the school newsletters as well, and I hope that's part of the marketing plan. I think there's time to get them in all the PTA newsletters. And I don't know what, I see Claudia in the audience here. I don't know how we reach out to the Stanford community, but including them on the list. I don't know if it's part of the plan, but I think it'd be good if we collected emails when people showed up and created another mailing list. And I'm glad to hear, I mean, we discussed last time that the workshop could be used maybe to identify community members who would be interested in ongoing engagement. So just glad to hear you say that that's going to be a possible focus. I think we should actually maybe explicitly ask people during the workshop, like, who would be interested in committing to ongoing participation? And I'm also glad to hear that you're going to be involved in those interviews. And I guess what, my one question I have is, when is the circulation study supposed to be complete? Is that during the summer?
So I have a couple of comments related to your earlier, but I'll answer that question first. We've already moved forward with existing conditions analysis using our travel demand model. It's really, you know, up to the committee as to how far we move forward on that. You know, we had some fits and starts early on, but we're ready to go forward. The goal of that was to actually be a parallel process to the context-sensitive solutions alternative. It's actually a separate task. So I think we'd move forward with that over the summer and start to get some data on different scenarios, but we'd want to come back to you with what scenarios we analyze.
So I thought the, just the basic circulation study was moving forward. Is that on hold?
We did the existing conditions, which is just as-is, what's going to happen, you know, what's happening now.
Is that going to be published?
We can provide that at the next Rail Committee meeting if you're interested. We also plan to analyze up to six scenarios. And if you remember, those would be where we look at, you know, grade separating one intersection, you know, removing one, all types of hypothetical scenarios. But, you know, our thought now is that those scenarios would need to be informed by the public process.
I think that's good, but to Councilmember Fels's point, does the existing conditions consider the 20 trains an hour?
We can bring at the next Rail Committee meeting, we can add that to the agenda, a presentation on existing conditions, if that makes sense.
But does it include the planned?
Yes, it includes the increase in frequency.
I mean, I think that'd be really useful to also maybe help frame the coming problem at the workshop if people really aren't tuned into that. And then you said you had some other comments.
Yeah, so first, you asked about which grade crossings we would cover in the presentation. My intent is to cover all of the existing and proposed grade crossings. So we would, you know, address Oregon, show images of Oregon and Barcadero, Churchill, all of the existing. We would also talk about the proposed bike-ped crossing near Loma Verde. There's also a proposed bike-ped crossing at Everett that's on the books. So we would talk about anything that's, you know, been planned previously, existing or future. And then the info stations, we're planning to have info stations located around the Palo Alto Room at the Mitchell Park Community Center before the meeting and during the meeting. These would include some interactive stations. We would also have information on the grade crossing work that Menlo Park is doing, as well as Mountain View, Rangsdorf, and Castro, so that our community members would be informed on what our neighbors are working on. And that would be, they'd be able to visit those before, during lunch, and then throughout the...
So the notes that didn't have time, I thought it got cut. Is that, they're still happening?
Yeah, they're just going to be info stations around the perimeter. I've already brought the, I've already notified the school community about the meeting at the City School Traffic Safety meeting last week, and Penny Ellison and the PTA group is going to help promote the May 20th, but we'll do some more intense outreach.
So again, I think Claudia has a connection, don't you? Yeah, if you can make sure that the final message is sent to them for publications.
And then in regard to emails, we've set up a GovDelivery email list specific to this program, and people can sign up on the website. We can also collect email addresses at the workshop and manually add people. And people will also be able to, if they receive the postcard and can't attend the meeting, they can go online and sign up for email updates. And then we can certainly ask people and try to identify specific people that want to, you know, participate more robustly at the workshop on May 20th, which could lead to the formation of some type of stakeholder group.
Yeah, and then I think the other comment that was good, I do think we should mention at the workshop that, you know, the possibility of some of these options could result in seizing homes. But I also think we should be careful about showing specific materials with specific houses. I think it's way too early for that.
Yep. Got a couple of comments, sort of scattershot, but I agree with what the dean has said about the, you know, the adjacency issue. I think we want to be careful of not signifying that this is just an issue of either possible taking or those impacted by noise or those kinds of things. I mean, this, this connection issue is for the entire city, so we want to make sure that we're, you know, we're doing some targeted outreach there. But, you know, I think that this is something that clearly affects the whole city. I think that the follow-up meeting that the Rail Committee will have after this session will be really important because, you know, we're going to learn a lot. And I think we should, I mean, I want to compliment Josh and the staff on really pivoting pretty quickly to try to put this together in the CSS sense, it's the problem definition piece, and we'll do the best we can to get this going. But, you know, I think, I think what's going to be really informative is what we learned between like who shows up, you know, what are we hearing, where do we begin to go from there. I want to also just sort of say, I think that this is very diff, this is going to be very different than most of the things that we've already done. I mean, we did a process a number of years ago on infrastructure with the I-Bright Committee and that sort of thing. I mean, in one sense, that that was an easy thing to do. I mean, it's just identifying some issues or problems and then going out and saying, "Hey, let's fix this stuff and let's find the money," and it was relatively painless to the community, and it was all basically just sort of good stuff. So the idea of impacts on folks or asking people to pay or those sorts of things, it just, it just wasn't there. So, I mean, this is, we recognize how big this is, but I do think that it's going to be something that is going to be continually unfolding. And if, I think we should recognize that part of what we're doing in the early stages of engagement is to be able to build almost a sort of a narrative that can be communicated to the community in the future about how we've now come from where we were to this point where we are now, and ultimately that the council can have the confidence that you've been informed enough to make some decisions. And I will predict this, that we will never have full, this full engagement as we really need until you actually make some choices and decisions. And then, no matter how much outreach we will do, then people will really start to wake up. Do you know what I mean? Say, "Oh, my goodness, I understand this now." So as I always like to say, you know, we have a representative government, but we also sort of have a town meeting form of government, and the only challenge is that a different town shows up every week. You know, you make one decision, there's a town there, then you make a decision based on that, and then everybody hears about that decision, and then a new town shows up and says, "Why did you guys make that decision?" So we're going to, I think, I think we're going to have to recognize that we want to design everything as carefully as possible, but I think we need to have a real mindset about adapting and fine-tuning as we go on and how we really build this narrative and communication piece about what's happening. I think it's what's going to be really key to building the trust and confidence you're going to need, because this is ultimately more of a campaign than it is anything else. I mean, we will get to a point, I would predict, that what you, we want to achieve can't be, can't be addressed solely with, say, the Measure B funds and the share of that. So we're going to have to look at how we then potentially look at other funding sources that may have direct impact on us, and we're really going to have to have built a lot of confidence and shared commitment in that for that to be able to happen. That's way down the road, but I think that, I think we should, need to acknowledge that.
It seems like a huge piece that's not mentioned in here is funding. Is there going to be any indication of cost for different types of construction or anything, just or available funds and funding gaps?
So on May 20th, we're not talking about solutions. We're only talking We're only talking about problem and evaluation criteria. When we start to get to the alternatives development, we're going to have to talk about what kind of fiscal constraints we're operating under. And, you know, that's going to be a big part of this whole conversation is, you know, how...
So even talking about problem, it'd be good, I mean, funding's a problem, which should be brought in.
Yeah, we're cer, well, we're certainly going to talk about what existing resources are out there, but we're not going to get into specific details about how much X-type of grade crossing costs or that type of thing.
Just one last thing to Jim's point about whether we're going out for funding in the future. And also your point earlier about working with some of the city manager along the corridor, it might be helpful to set the context of what we're doing, what other cities are doing and how we may work with them as well. I think there's some sentiment in the community that we're competing for these, for Measure B funds. That may not be the case now, and that's probably an important context to set for folks, that we can actually work collaboratively with Sunnyvale, Mountain View, et cetera.
All right, well, thank you guys for the hard work on this. Looking, looking forward to it. Okay, anything else on this item?
I have one, one question, sorry.
Sure.
I don't mean to interfere with the process, but does the next rail committee meet after the May 20th workshop and would there be a need to meet before the workshop?
I think that's up to the committee. I think we're ready to go. We'll certainly be reaching out to the chair and the mayor in advance to help prepare you for your presentation. But I would suggest that we regroup after the workshop.
Yeah, I'm just looking, when's our next meeting scheduled?
I'm showing me 24th.
Yeah, right after the workshop. We'll keep that date. I don't expect you'll have any, everything analyzed by then, but maybe early indications.
Yeah, I think we'll have a verbal report and some preliminary survey data, but we'll have the full summary probably the following meeting.
Okay. So let's move on, I guess. So last items, interagency communications, future agendas. Any comments on those items?
I'm sorry, we're not meeting until the 24th, that's the next meeting.
Yes. Just one comment for future agendas. I mean, hearing the update from High Speed Rail, I mean, what, should we think about having Caltrain come in at some point? All right, is there nothing further?
Actually, I do, one announcement for the men in the room, there was a cell phone
found in the men's room, right out the door here. So if anyone's missing their cell phone, I've got details.
All right, without meeting adjourned.